Good evening, I'd like to call your order the March 3rd meeting of the Johnston County Commissioners, the evening session. The first item on the agenda is approval of said agenda. Any item on the agenda need to be moved, added to? All right.
Chairman, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it. Motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. The agenda's approved. The first item on the agenda tonight is recognition of the Joko Phoenix Firebirds. And I think we have some folks about to make an entrance here.
Yeah.
There can be some cheering coming in, it's all right.
Yeah, I love it.
We'll assume it's for us.
Yeah.
And so I think we have at least a, is it east end?
Yes.
All right. Well, tell us about this fine group you have.
Sure.
And y'all can come up and spread around so we can see all of you.
Yeah.
See all of you. There you go, right there's good. Yeah, there. And so we will, we'll get a, can we get a picture afterwards?
Yes.
Okay. I think y'all about all get in here saying.
Am I able to read what I wrote?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Yeah.
So, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize Joko Phoenix Firebirds. In 2024, Joko Phoenix AYC not only founded a new organization, but also created history as the first special needs team in the mid-Atlantic region, forever changing the landscaping of inclusive cheerleading. Firebirds include four coaches, three athletes of different abilities such as cerebral palsy, autism, developmentally delayed, and cortical vision impairment; four peer leaders. Our peer leaders are volunteer athletes from our organization that assist at practices and on competition floor, on the competition floor. They must learn two routines, one for their team and the routine for Firebirds, and are at practice two to three nights a week. The team was created to celebrate differences, promote acceptance, understanding, unity, and honor diversity. Firebirds have accomplished so much this year. You are looking at your 2024 local, regional, and national champions.
All right.
And most recently named, and most recently named 2025 Global's Champions in Atlantic City, New Jersey.
All right.
To say that we are proud of these young ladies is an understatement. We believe that showcasing their talent, other children will see that they are capable of accomplishing anything they set their minds to, and adults will see the able, not the label. Let's give these ladies a round of applause.
All right. So, can you tell us their names?
So, this is.
Oh, they can, yeah.
I'm Anderson.
I'm Nyla.
I'm Alon.
I'm Sadie.
And I'm Delaney.
I'm Skyler.
And Salem.
And I'm Coach Lisa.
This is Coach.
Coach Alyssa.
I'm Coach Raymond.
Oh, I'm Coach Kennedy. I do search.
And so, we have parents in the back too? Okay, yeah, yeah.
I'm Stacy's mom.
Okay.
Anderson's mom.
What a fantastic program. That is awesome. Well, good work. Congratulations.
Ah, grandmother.
That's very important. Very important.
So, thank you for having us.
So, if you want to come up, actually, is there like a little demonstration you can give us? A cheer, yeah. You know what I'm saying?
Yes. Do you have the music?
Of course.
We don't, we don't just ask everybody to do this, so.
Hey, Rick. She can hold it to Rick's microphone.
Yeah, can you play it into the?
Rick, hold the microphone to her phone so that you can hear.
Can you play it into his microphone over there?
Yeah.
So, I take it those are all the medals? Wow.
Wow. Those are exciting.
Oh, wait. So, y'all gonna throw, oh, this might be very interesting.
Yes. We're confident.
Yeah, we would not need to open this up.
All right, ready? All right, okay.
Hold on one second.
Don't roll, don't roll, don't roll. Oh, don't, don't. Go to your spot, go to your spot.
I wouldn't either. But come on up here and let's take a picture.
Yes, ma'am. Thank y'all.
Follow that man in the jacket will tell you how to do it. Yeah, tell you how to.
I will say, I think this is the most energetic group we've had in front of us.
I agree.
We'll just remember that all of our planning presentations should be this energetic, so just, just saying.
We're gonna come to a cheer. The next year we're in water or meeting, we'll have a cheer prepared.
Yeah.
Yeah, adults in the back. You gonna get in there?
Right in the middle.
There you go.
Mascot.
All right, y'all ready? Oh, that's good. One, two, three.
Salem.
And now I see Delaney.
Salem.
Hi, hi, hi.
Salem, right here, Coach Kennedy.
Say cheese.
Thank y'all.
Very nice to meet y'all. Congratulations.
Yeah, thank y'all.
Is that the first time any cheering has been done in here?
Yes. That was awesome. What a great program. Yeah, it is. That's the fun part of this job.
Amen.
Yeah, that is.
That'd be me on that buggy there by the time.
Yeah, so that's one of the happiest groups to me in front of us too, so that's nice.
I'm waiting to want a little girl and she runs back at me.
All right, we'll move on to the next portion, which is public comment. And I believe Adam, Carol, PIO has an introduction for us.
You like following that?
And I don't say.
Tough following the things there.
Wheel, whatever, whatever you feel like.
Yeah, so we want to introduce today our intern, our first intern for the Public Information Office. Her name's Abigail Gallegos, and we're very happy to have her. She is a student at UNC Greensboro, so finishing up that degree. And she's gonna be helping us with social media, hopefully getting a lot more content on there. We found out today, her friend is also interning at the Ag Center, so hopefully they'll do some collaboration and be getting some more ag content, or some new ag content on our social media channels, but we're very happy to have her. She's already hit the ground running. She's been to Commissioner Brazwell's bridge dedication. She's been to the luncheon today at the Ag Center and been to two board meetings now, so she's, she's getting right to work, so.
Well, she ought to have some footage to work with for social media after that, so.
But want to introduce y'all, and you'll see her around a lot of them.
Welcome, welcome. Yeah, well. Glad to have you here. All right, then we'll move on now to the rezoning conditional use requests, and we will open with case 2430. And we will call on, I will open that hearing, and we will call on Brass Newton, our planning director, for background and any questions we may have.
Did you ask me any other public comments?
Oh, was there any other, I don't think, any other public comments? I don't, yeah, okay, no. Now, we had no emails, thank you for that. Commissioner Galway.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board. The first case this evening is case 24-30. This involves a petition to rezone 25.9 acres across three tracts of property located on Stevens Sausage Road in Smithfield Township from agricultural residential to industrial to conditional zoning. Owner and applicant is Stevens Sausage Road 3411 ALC, and the conditional zoning request is to allow for uses involving meatpacking and other related industrial uses. There is currently an industry located on the property, and it is Stevens Sausage, and they currently do perform meatpacking and processing. The existing and surrounding land uses, property is owned, they are, it is a legal non-conforming use, which essentially means it has been in place well long before we had countywide zoning, and has operated continuously throughout that time. Additionally, surrounding land uses are residential and agriculture. Traffic concerns, Stevens Sausage Road only has about 300 vehicles per day, it's extremely low counts, and it does not appear on our CTP as needing improvement. You will see in your packet, there is a site plan, a conceptual site plan associated with conditional zoning. You will also see conditions within the staff report and the applicant's application as they submitted. With regard to our land use plan, this is, the property is located in an agricultural area place type in accordance with Envision Johnston, and I'm glad to answer any questions you may have regarding the staff report or the site plan at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Newton? All right, hearing none, I will ask the applicant to come forward, and if they would, give their name and address, and present any information you think is relevant for us making our decision.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and my name is Sloan Stevens, 1206 Chestnut Drive, here in Smithfield. And, yeah, so what brings me here tonight is the rezoning request. Given the growth around the county, I just wanted to go ahead and get the family business into conformity, kind of get ahead of any potential growth that may one day happen down Brogdon Road. I'd rather do this now in a quiet room. You know, cheerleaders are great, but I don't want any other cheerleaders. But, yeah, just thinking ahead down the road, don't have any immediate plans to do any large expansion, but we're fortunately very busy. If, we're not far from having to do any kind of expansion, so any small expansion would require, would, could trigger the rezoning, so I figured now's a good time as any, and to go ahead and get this, get this out of the way. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Any questions for Mr. Stevens? And I'm assuming you've looked at the nine conditions?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, and I will.
I agree, I agree to all those, and.
Okay, I was gonna ask that question, so then I may ask it again, but.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just wanted to make sure, and I do see there's a limited number of uses on there, and I'm gonna ask, the staff was okay with these, these uses?
Yes, sir, we are.
All right, any, anything else for us?
No, we just keep on plugging away, and hopefully we can, I can come here one day and have a big, nice plant to show you and talk about all that, but, you know, we'll keep, we'll keep heading that direction, but not tonight.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Any, anyone else wishing to speak to this item? All right, I will close the public discussion portion of the hearing, and call on Mr. Newton to summarize and present the planning board's recommendations.
Yes, sir, as it relates to case 24-30 and the rezoning, conditional zoning request of property at Stevens Sausage Road at said location. Staff does recommend approval, and planning board has reviewed and held their public hearing, and does also recommend approval with a statement of consistency for your consideration.
All right, any questions for Mr. Newton? All right, anything from the planning board meeting of interest, the questions they asked?
No, sir, nothing.
All right.
Quick question, just from my knowledge. With this being conditional zoning, when they do come back, potentially to build, that will come back to the planning department for approval, correct? For everything that they want to do?
There will be a site plan that comes back, and if it, if it varies substantially from the, from the site plan associated with conditional zoning, that would have to come back before this party.
And I would just add, based on the previous meeting where we had the conditional zoning with some unknown uses, I think we narrowed that list down, and looking through this list for me, I don't see anything objective in the current use, so I think we're being consistent with the way we've applied our ordinances to, and land use plan to previous cases, so.
Thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
All right, any other questions? All right, I will close, I've already asked the applicant if they've agreed to the conditions, and they have indicated they do agree with them, so I will now close the hearing and turn it over to the board for.
Mr. Chairman, this, this is not unusual for this to be coming ahead of, I don't know how to say this. Sloan comes from a mighty fine family, they got a very good business in this county, and I'm proud to have them here in this county. And it would just be just like the family to be forward-thinking enough to, you know, be prepared for things down the road, so therefore I move to adopt a statement of consistency resolution that's presented in the agenda pack and approve the rezoning request with the conditions as discussed.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any other comments? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. Mr. Stevens.
Y'all have a good evening. Have a meeting to yourself. I sure look like a daddy, don't I?
All right, next we have case 2433. I will open the conditional zoning hearing for that, and Ms. Newton, call on you to introduce the background and be ready for any questions this board may have.
Yes, sir. Case 24-33 is petition to rezone 3.37 acres located at 10-369 NC Highway 96 North in O'Neil's Township. From community business to general business conditional zoning district, owner and applicant is Cattail Family ALC. They were represented this evening by Mr. Alza Gilbert, who is the engaged surveyor and designer for the property. Their conditional zoning request is asking for it to allow an event center and daily bakery or restaurant at the location, and this is, if you'll note, this is just a small portion of the Cattail Lake property that fronts along NC 96, and this does have an existing structure on it, which is Cattail Meal. Additionally, on your site plan, I will point out on the site plan, you will see a pedestrian bridge that is between, essentially crossing the, crossing the spillway of the dam from the lake. This is, does seem close to the right of way, however, this preemptively, this was submitted for variance before our Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment did grant the variance for that, and that is to facilitate people from the north side of the property over to the south side of the property to have access to the meal house for whatever activities may take place there. With that being said, the traffic concerns on NC 96 is 2,800 vehicles per day, per day. This is a 2023 count, so it's relatively recent. This portion of 96 does appear on the comprehensive transportation plan as the existing major thoroughfare having adequate design capacity. The property is located within an open space and conservation future land use place type on the county's Envision Johnston Comprehensive Land Use Plan. And you will see, in addition to the site plan, you will see in your staff report, those conditions, which are 21 in number for your view, and I'm glad to answer any questions you may have at this time.
All right, any questions for Mr. Newton? All right, thank you, Mr. Newton. And I will ask if the applicant will come forward and present information relevant to us making our decision.
Just basically, it's going from CB zoning, which is pretty wide open, to one now that has conditional use, which means it'll have to come back. Kind of puts a little more in your control now than what it was. So, I can't say a whole lot about it, other than I think it's a good use for the property with the subdivision approved around the meal house. It kind of adds to the community, and instead of, a lot of communities lose these old meal houses and stuff, this one is being preserved, and it's kind of unique that all the machinery is still in it. So, I hope Norwood has a good progress on this and continues to move forward with it, so.
All right, any questions for Mr. Gilbert? All right, and I will ask you this time, Mr. Gilbert, any, any issues with any of the 21 conditions?
No, sir. As far as Army Corps is concerned, we've got a letter from them, their standoff is on this one, because we're not disturbing the lake. Anything along the Class B buffers and all that, that'll be addressed later by engineering companies, because it's pre-existing to 1997 rule, and I'll let people with greater minds than mine address all that, so.
All right, then maybe I'll rephrase that with them. You agree with all the conditions?
I agree with.
Okay, there we go. Attorney kind of looked at me when I asked it the opposite way. Any other questions?
Good conversation.
Yeah. All right, I will, anyone else here wishing to speak on this? Yes, ma'am, please come up, state your name and your address, please.
My name is Crystal Burton. I live over off of 96 in the Daylily subdivision, which is right between Price Road and Jordan Aaron, so I will actually be right by the Cattail Lake there. So, my only concern would be, I guess, just kind of what will end up happening with it, the traffic that will bring, especially depending on what events end up happening there, things like that, especially with that new subdivision coming in. So, just kind of keeping that in mind, especially late hours. I know it would be indoor music and things like that, but we already do get a lot of traffic over there and things like that, so just kind of keeping that in mind with that neighborhood being right there. We do get a lot of traffic right there, so it would bring a lot of traffic to that area, so just keeping that in mind. And it would be great, especially maybe possibly having a bakery potential there or something, that would be nice for something right there, but just kind of going forward, kind of seeing what potentially would happen to that. So, that would just be kind of my concern.
Were you able to take a look at the 21 conditions?
I did, I kind of looked over everything.
And I see that the hours you had mentioned, Monday through Sunday, 7 to 11.
Yeah, and it is, I mean, it is an active area over there already, just with, I mean, we have all the trucks going by, like the gas trucks and things like that already, so, I mean, it is a busy road right there, so just imagining cars coming out of that area for an event, kind of, I'm just curious to see how that would hinder having like a wedding or a, you know, some type of event like that, or, you know, depending on what kind of venue events they would have.
What'd you say your address was?
It's 76 Daylily, where the Daylily subdivision, Lily Farms.
Right. Okay.
So, I'm not opposed to it, I just would like, would be interested to see kind of moving forward, what kind of, I know it's so kind of broad, what may end up happening, but I just know, traffic, I think, would be the big concern, because we have gotten a lot more traffic, especially with that roundabout and everything right there at 96 and 42, so.
And Mr. Gilbert, I, I know there used to be events there, has there been any events there in the recent history? Recent years?
Thanksgiving, they have that Thanksgiving party there every year, and.
How about coming to the microphone, if you would? Yeah, sorry. Next time you take, I'll let you take it with you.
I'm on lean. They still have occasional events there. Most of them family-related. You've been to some out there, and there's catfish fries and everything else, so I haven't been to one, which I haven't been around a whole lot, neither in the last four years, so.
What is the amount of parking, onsite parking?
There's not a whole lot onsite parking, that's just to serve.
Yeah, right here, I counted 12 spots.
There's only 12 spots. Any events will be handled, there's an existing gravel, you remember it, it's left.
Okay.
And then there's one on the other side of the pedestrian bridge, it's gravel where the old raceway used to be.
Okay.
Not many people remember the old raceway.
I do. Everybody looked at me like I was crazy when I mentioned that.
It's still portions, you can see.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
And, and I guess, thanks, Alza, any, any concerns from the DOT as far as traffic? I know you mentioned the, the traffic count, but has there been anything to the DOT at this point?
DOT is not indicated as of yet, if there would be any required improvements on 96 at that, at that point of driveway, at either points or either acts, points of access. We could probably, we might, could probably anticipate some. Now, we'll say there, there was a TIA that was completed for the Cattail, Cattail Development, which is residential development on either side of the lake, and there are numerous, numerous improvements that are to be made throughout the development phases of those, of that project, so that will, that will play into DOT's decision as to what improvements may be required here at the meal house.
Okay. And, Crystal, I can't read my own head, what was your last name?
Burton.
Okay, all right, well, I sure didn't write that down. But does that help answer something? I mean, we don't have, I guess we don't have an answer today, but I know there's.
I figured, and that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I know it's still a work in progress.
Okay. All right, anyone else on this item? All right, I will close the public discussion and call on Mr. Newton to summarize and present the planning board's recommendation.
Yes, sir, as it relates to case 24-33 and rezoning property at 10-369 NC Highway 96 from community business to general business conditional zoning, planning board does recommend approval in office for your consideration, a statement of consistency. Staff does, does concur with their recommendation for approval.
All right, any questions of Mr. Newton? All right, and I have already asked the applicant if they agree with the conditions, and they did, so I will now close the hearing, and I will turn it over to the board for discussion.
Well, I really like the idea of preserving the old, the old building, that's a lot of our county and history is getting torn down all the time, and I, I really like the idea that it's, it's a part of this project and will live for a lot longer, so, based on that, if there's any other discussion, I'll, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to adopt a statement of consistency resolution as presented in the agenda packet and approve the rezoning request with the conditions as discussed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I will just add that the folks associated with Cattail Family have historically done a great job of maintaining old facilities and making them continue to be useful and also function as the way it needs to function nowadays, so I expect this to be a, a great outstanding project moving forward, so. All right, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. All right, that brings us to our third case, which is case 2501. I will now open that conditional zoning district hearing and call on Mr. Newton for the case background. All right.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, so, uh, case 25-01 is petition to rezone 0.85 acres located in the 14,900 block of NC Highway 39 in O'Neilstownship from agricultural residential to general business conditional zoning district, uh, owner and applicant is Raymond Mitchell, uh, the conditional zoning request involves a use of a business office and barber and beauty salon, uh, the property, uh, the generally property in this area is on agricultural residential and used for such purposes, there are nearby along the, uh, 39 corridor, there are a couple of properties that are, uh, general business conditional zoning used, uh, for landscaping supply and storage building display, um, traffic concerns, Highway 39 sees about 6,400 vehicles per day, and this is a 2023 count, and it does, uh, appear on our comprehensive transportation plan as an existing boulevard, boulevard needing improvement, uh, land use or land use place type designation is rural living in accordance with Envision Johnston or land use plan, um, and you will see a, a site plan provided by the applicant, uh, in your packet, in addition to that, there are 12 conditions in the staff report, uh, for consideration as well, you, this was, uh, submitted prior, previously, and this property was actually part of a larger parent tract, and the applicant withdrew in order to, uh, subdivide the property and segregate this from the, that, uh, original larger tract, as you will see on their site plan, there's a house there on the, on the adjacent tract, um, that is now obviously subdivided, so, uh, here for any questions you may have at, at this time.
Any questions for Mr. Newton? All right, thank you, Mr. Newton, I will now ask the applicant to come forward and present any information relevant to this case.
My name is Raymond Mitchell, and it's a goal of mine, I wanted to, um, well, I'll put it to you like this, I'm gonna keep it real, I went to school here in Johnston County, and as I went through school, I, I wasn't good in school, and my, um, ability to do things kinda got knocked down, and I wanted to, um, well, I got where I couldn't cope with people knocking me down in school, and so I quit school, and that was a bad decision, but I never gave up, and I wanted to make something out of myself, so I've been working ever since I was 16, and I'm 63, and I'm very proud of what I've done, and one goal of mine is I wanted to make that building down there in the barbershop for the neighborhood, so it's a personal goal of mine to wanted to do that for my life, because we're all cousins around there, I used to farm the land, my daddy and mom and everything, so I, one goal of mine is to make it a barbershop, and, um, see what happened, I wanna go out on faith and see what happened. Now that you speak.
I think that he said it all, I mean, it's been a process, um, for us going through and making sure that we've done things the right way, um, for the area, and, um, you know, would like to have that as a, an opportunity, um, for the Mitchell family and for the area, um, and to contribute back, um, to the, to the county as well, and so, um, we are here just to support the application and agree with the conditions as stated, um, after we have gone to the planning board, and, um, and just looking forward to a favorable response.
All right, and her name and address, please?
My name is Raymond Mitchell.
Okay, and yours?
I'm Vanessa Barnes.
Okay. All right, any questions for the applicant? All right, and is it the 12, so you see the 12, are y'all agreeable to those 12 conditions?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I don't believe there's anyone else here to speak to this, so I will close the public discussion and then call on Mr. Newton to present the planning board's, uh, recommendations for us.
Yes, sir, as it relates to case 25-01 and rezoning of property at 14,900 NC Highway 39, uh, from agricultural residential to general business conditional zoning district, the, uh, planning board does recommend approval with a statement of consistency for your consideration, and staff does concur with that recommendation.
All right, any additional questions for Mr. Newton on this? All right, we have confirmed that the applicant agrees to all the conditions, so I will close the hearing and turn it over to the board for their discussion.
As always, I have concerns about dropping a commercial property in the middle of a residential area, um, although when I'm looking at the, the map, and as Mr. Newton mentioned, there are several, I see, commercial, um, other commercial properties, uh, right around this, and what a stone's throw, for lack of a better word, um, this particular, particular style business, I can't imagine creates a lot of traffic or, um, issues, I would say, that I would typically be concerned about in a residential area.
All right, any other comments?
No, I just agree with Ms. Stevens that, um, this, I think, would be a good, as his goal is being a place of community, I think would be great in this area, um, so therefore I move to adopt the statement of consistency resolution as presented in the agenda packet and approve the rezoning request with the conditions as discussed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good luck, Mr. Mitchell.
Thank you.
Sure.
Good luck. Let me know when you open, so I can come see you.
[laughing]
Nothing else, I can sit and talk with you, how about that?
Get a discount.
Thank you.
Great place to gather.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. All right. The next item, uh, is a resolution for financing a portion of the advanced manufacturing training center in Four Oaks and a classroom addition in, at Cleveland High School, and Chat McLam, our finance director, is here to present information on that.
Good evening, now that you're sitting, it's the Johnston County Board of Commissioners, uh, staff requested the board adopt the resolution approving the, uh, plan to finance a portion of construction of the advanced manufacturing training center in the town of Four Oaks and a classroom addition at Cleveland High School, uh, with a principal amount up to $30 million, doing this will also allow us to set up a capital project ordinance for these projects.
This is a follow-up to the public game we had this morning?
Yes, yes, correct. Correct. All right, any questions of Mr. McLam? Did I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the resolution approving the plan to finance a portion of the construction of the advanced manufacturing training center in the town of Four Oaks and the classroom addition at Cleveland High School in a principal amount of up to $30 million.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, manager board and comments, all right, we go to board reports and comments. Commissioner Stevens, I'll start over with you.
Um, I had the honor of attending the, um, ribbon cutting of the expansion of the Clayton Park, um, over at Amelia, on Amelia Church Road today, and it was really exciting to see, um, had a great presentation by the, the family who had contributed the land and had a strong, um, passion for the senior games being there, they had hundreds of medals from previous senior games they participated in, so it was just a really great, um, great day to, to see all that Clayton is expanding and doing for our communities.
All right, thank you. Anything? That's chairman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, there is a need for a closed session.
Okay.
That's all I've got is comments.
Okay. Commissioner Dowan?
When the Joko Phoenix Firebirds were in here a while ago, I don't think there was a face in here that didn't have a smile on him.
Absolutely.
And anytime someone is smiling or laughing, you're having a good time, so I commend those folks, and especially the, the coaches and, and the adults that are working with those kids, uh, they were happy kids, and they make me feel happy, I'm glad they came, I commend them for what they do.
All right, Commissioner Stavall?
Uh, no comments, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Davis?
Uh, I would just like to say that I felt like we had a really great luncheon today, as serving on the Extension Advisory Council, uh, committee since 2018, um, it was really neat to be there now as a commissioner, so it was really cool, and it was really neat to have everybody there as well, and just, again, kudos for the extension staff, they are the best of the best.
Absolutely.
They are.
They're the best.
They are the best, yeah.
Yep.
All right, I did not have anything, just a reminder of our, uh, strategic planning retreat on the 26th and 27th at the Workforce Development Center, uh, in Clayton, and we will start at nine o'clock, uh, and be live string there, it's also open to the public as well, but, uh, just wanted to remind everybody of that, so I do think, uh, with that, do we have a need to go into closed session?
Yes, sir, we do, and I'll make, uh, move that the board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A5, acquisition of real property.
Uh, second. All right, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion on that? If not, all those in favor, uh, of going into closed session for the stated reason, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? All right, we do not expect any action to be taken after the closed session, okay? All right, then we will take a short recess, not a lot of room to clear out, but we'll-